Yes, I'm turning on the recording. I'm turning on the recording right now. I made an error. I'm sorry. I didn't have on record the acceptance of the four late file items. There was no objection.
What? Point of order, Jay? This is Barry. I think the rules state that we have to do everything through a roll call vote and I think it's probably a good idea. It'll get us through the evening if we suspend the rules to so we can move along on a voice vote and trust your judgment to interpret what you hear.
Well, I defer to the clerk and Chair Zied, but I thought in our policy, we dealt with that. And by the way, I saw your hand raised, Lauren. I'll get to you in a minute. What did we do in our policy? I thought we didn't. I thought we waived that particular rule.
We did do that in the policy, Counsel Zied. I don't know if you agree with me. However, I don't know as though the policy's ever been accepted formally by the council. Was it last meeting?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, it was. We amended our Rule 7E to adopt it.
All right. Fair enough.
Okay, yeah. So under Rule 7E, the policy is in effect, so we don't have to do a roll call on everything.
Oh, great. That's what I was hoping for.
Okay.
Mr. President, just to confirm, so the document states, you know, procedural votes may be taken by voice vote so long as no single counselor objects. So that and then other votes shall be taken by roll call, e.g. ordinances. So that those are the rules that we are operating under based on the ad hoc policy accepted. The date's out of my head now, but I believe.
That's terrific. Thank you.
All right. So the way I'm going to do it, so everybody understands, and I think the fire chief has joined too, and I'll recognize him in a minute. I'm going to ask if anyone objects because all it takes is one counselor to say that they object and they can we can go to a voice a roll call vote. So first, in order, there's a guest named Lauren that I wanted to recognize. If you could give your your full name and your address, if you still wish to speak. I've unmuted you.
Hi, this is Lauren. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, yes. So name and address, please. You get two minutes.
Perfect. Hi, this is Lauren Healy from 12 Drew Street, and it's a pleasure to sort of stand in front of you. I am writing to you today to express interest in becoming a member of the Newburyport Open Space Committee. I was recruited by the current member, Elizabeth Marcus. Since returning home from college, where I went to UMass Amherst, I've been excited to rejoin the environmental movement in Newburyport. I would be a good fit for the Open Space Committee as I've always been an active member of the community. I'm a Newburyport native and care deeply that we continue to meet our needs while at the same time preserving what makes us such a great place to live, open space. Throughout high school, I advocated for green roofs by building a demonstration green roof in our city with the support of the mayor and Molly Edgell, as well as giving public presentations. I've attended and spoken at city councils' meetings on affordable housing, as well as reached out to my counselors about the flooding issues in the Phillips Drive neighborhood. Additionally, I have a strong conservation background. During college, I majored in natural resource conservation with a special focus on green infrastructure. Specifically, I took a class focused on strategic land conservation using conservation easements and funding options. I would like to apply my knowledge to Newburyport. During my first meeting with the Open Space Committee, I already saw opportunities where I could contribute. With much of the land in the city protected, the committee is shifting towards stewardship of acquired open space. I'd love to work with the committee to increase awareness of green infrastructure solutions like green gardens, green roofs, and native gardens. Another idea is to create a GIS mapping prioritization of the roofs in Newburyport that are either the best for solar or green roofs, which I have already done for Springfield, Massachusetts. I'd love the opportunity to help with the revision of the open space and recreation plan as well. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, we don't have anything in the packet from the mayor's office, so please make sure to contact them tomorrow and make sure they have all your interest noted.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I believe Chief Leclair. Let's see. Have I unmuted you? Hold on just a second. Chief Leclair?
Yes, sir.
Ah, please, go right ahead. Did you want to speak?
No, sir. I'm just here for the transfer.
Okay, great. All right. Well, we'll get to we'll get to that in due course. Doesn't I don't see anyone else who wishes to speak during a public comment. Looks like we have to work out the kinks on that one. I apologize. Again, under the emergency policy, people could write in, but they probably don't know that they're supposed to write in, so I took the liberty of taking that comment. There is no mayor's comment tonight. Nothing's been submitted in writing, and the mayor is at a school committee meeting. She's not available. So let's proceed to the consent agenda. But before we do that, we got written notice, the clerk and I, from Counselor Kahn, to remove Communication 235, which is the letter about the school committee accepting Brett Murphy to Whittier Vote Tech Committee. So that's going to be moved to the communications section.
Very good.
With that, Clerk Jones, I think you can read the rest.
Thank you, Mr. President. The consent agenda consists this evening of the approval of two minutes, March 9th and March 16th. There are now one communication, Communication 234, which is a letter from the Newburyport Livable Streets dated March 11, 2020. That's to go to Neighborhood and City Services. Communication 235, as you mentioned, was removed at the request of Counselor Kahn. There are no transfers. The following first reading of appointments. Appointment 157 Suzanne Gallagher, 3 Garnet Street, to the Board of Registarians again until 3:30, 2023. Appointment 158 Kevin Hunt, 14 10th Street, as Veterans Agent until 4:01, 2021. Appointment 159 Judy Timman, 39 Lime Street, to the Affordable Housing Trust until 4:30, 2022. And Appointment 160 Andrew Kassen, 240 Merrimack Street, to the Harbor Commission until 3:31, 2023. Following is to be referred to the Planning and Development Committee. So the reappointment of 161 of Rick Tainter, 10 Dexter Street, to the Planning Board, 415, 2025. Following items are removed from their respective committees with a motion to approve the consent agenda. Budget and Finance, two transfers, Transfers 69 and 71. And Planning and Development, which is Appointment 142 Matthew D. Penizziak, 39 Marlborough Street, to the Waterfront Trust until 1:01, 2025. And that with that one amendment of Communication 235 is the consent agenda this evening.
Motion to approve as amended.
There's a second?
Second, Bruce.
Thank you.
Okay. Any objection to approving? I'm not hearing any, so it's deemed approved.
Very good.
Okay, onto the regular agenda. There is no mayor's update, so we can skip that and go to appointments.
The following second reading of appointments, 153 Jane Healy, 38 Winter Street, to the Community Preservation Commission until 3:31, 2023. Appointment 154 Paul Harrington, 251B High Street, to the Tree Commission, same date, 3:31, 2023. And Appointment 155 Maurice Southworth, 12 Fruit Street, to the Fruit Street Historic Commission until 5:31, 2023. Those are the second reading of appointments.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
Collectively?
Okay, is there a discussion on those collectively? No, that will do a roll call.
For the second reading of appointments, Counsel Vogel.
President, yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Zied.
Yes.
Counsel Devlin.
Yes.
Counsel Kahn.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley. Counsel McCauley. We'll go back to Counsel McCauley. Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tontar.
Yes.
Counsel Argheman.
Counsel Argheman, yes. I was just trying to figure out. It looks like Counsel McCauley doesn't have any audio. So Counsel McCauley, if you can hear us, maybe you could call in on your telephone? That's all I can think of.
We're going to go.
There's no microphone showed for him shown for him.
So why don't we say 10 yes, one absent? Or silent?
Hold on, hold on. He's raising his hand. Hold on a second. Yeah, I know you're raising your hand, but there's nothing to do about it.
Well, I would point of order could be interpreted as a yes vote.
Well, it could be. I mean, it could be a no vote.
Make sure it thumbs up.
Isn't there a chat ability here?
Right. There isn't.
No, no, there's no chat. I turned that off deliberately. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Jim, that it doesn't. I'm looking at all the choices. I can make you a co-host, but I can't turn. I can't let you talk because it doesn't give me the option. Sorry.
They can call in.
Yeah, sorry, guys. Oh, well, communications.
So we have three communications, including the one from the consent agenda, which is number 235. So numerically, we would take that communication first, which is the communication of the appointment, the school committee appointment of Brett Murphy to the Whittier Vote Tech Committee.
Yeah, motion to refer to Education Committee.
Second. This is Barry.
I know Counselor Kahn was interested in that.
Is there any discussion of referring it to education? Is there any objections? Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I apologize. I didn't raise my hand. Is this member currently serving on the committee? Does anybody know?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone object to referring it? Oh, Counsel McCauley, he's back. Hold on just a second.
Mr. President?
Yeah, we can hear you. How about that?
Great. First of all, I was on the attendees and wasn't late, so my vote was a yes on the last one, and I'll. So I just want to let you know I'm back.
Was that a?
No, I know you weren't. I know you weren't late. You were here, but something went wrong. Okay, I'm sorry. Counsel Vogel.
I'm sorry. My internet connection seems to be unstable. The message I'm getting, I'm a yes.
Okay. Did anyone object to referring this to education? I'm not hearing any objections, so I think it's by acclamation, it gets referred. Next communication, 237.
Oh, motion.
237 or 236? 236.
We just did 236.
We did 235, Mr. President.
Oh, I beg your pardon, 235. 236 DLS Bulletin.
Motion to refer to Budget and Finance.
Second.
Any discussion of that? Any objection to that? You're all unmuted. I can see it, except for Counsel Devlin. I'm not hearing any objection.
Mr. President, can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Clerk Jones? Clerk Jones? Well, I didn't hear any objections. I'll have to see. Does anyone? If you have an objection and I'm not hearing you, you can raise your hand electronically. Not seeing that. So that is referred to Budget and Finance. Now we go to Communication 237. Clerk Jones, can you hear us? No, can't hear us. Communication 237 is a letter regarding 21 to 23 Walnut Street. We accepted it as a late file today. It's from the De Statler family. It regards a abandoned building, a Greek Revival Building. What is the will of the council?
Motion to refer to Public Safety.
Second.
Does anyone wish to speak on that? Does anyone object to referring it or wish to raise their hand to register their objection? I'm not seeing any of that, so that is referred. I believe that's all the communications because 235 was put at the beginning and I missed it. Orders. Clerk Jones, I'm trying to figure out what's the problem here. I don't know. Something's going on. Your mic is unmuted. Okay, order one.
This is the clerk. I have joined by telephone.
Ah, thank you. Okay. We are at item 13, orders. Order 176, late file, ban on fabric reusable bags.
Okay, if you would like me to read that, I'd be happy to. That would make me feel good.
All right, go for it.
Use of fabric reusable bags, as defined in the code, shall be prohibited within the city during the official state of emergency, as declared by Baker under executive order dated March 10th. Submitted Byron Lane.
Counsel Lane, did you wish to speak on this item?
Yeah, I had submitted this with exactly what it was intended for, and since then, I believe that the city has taken measures to implement this. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, and we have other counselors that wish to speak. But yes, so my understanding has been overtaken by events, so that there was a there was an order issued by the governor statewide that covers the same topic. But I, okay, anything further, Counsel Lane?
That's all.
Okay, Counsel Zied and Counsel Kahn, Counsel Tontar. Counsel Zied.
I'd like to get into the queue, Jay. I can't see a place to raise my hand here, however.
Okay, I won't forget you.
Just for the clerk, if he would consider muting his computer, that should get rid of the echo back and the feedback. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Okay, now we come to talk radio. Counselor Kahn.
Yes, I want to just make a motion to receive and file this one, but I didn't know if I had to raise my hand to say that.
Yeah, no, you did. Is there a second?
I'll second that Vogel here.
Okay, Counsel Tontar and then Counsel Connell.
So actually, I had a question. The motion indicates only the use of fabric reusable bags, and I know it's kind of a moot point. What I do not know is what the city has banned. I would argue that if the city is only banning fabric reusable bags, it's a mistake.
Correct.
It's a fabric reusable bags actually have much more porous than plastic. And, you know, everything I've read is that coronavirus would desiccate on fabric within three hours, where in plastic it's going to stay forever. So I just want to be on the record that if you're going to ban these down things, and I understand a lot of this came out of institutes that are funded by the petroleum industry, they might not want to ban plastic bags, reusable bags, but if we're going to do this, we ought to ban all reusable bags.
Okay, I was going to go to Counsel Connell, but before I do, just to answer the question, just to point out information, again, it's the governor's order. The city, I don't believe the city has an order. It's just the governor's order that covers this. Counsel Connell.
Yeah, as the chief sponsor and proponent of the reusable bag ordinance, I was kind of torn on this. I agree with what Counsel Tontar has said, that, you know, we ought to be fairly omnibus on this and make it a ban on reusable bags. Although this seems inconsistent with my previous support, I do believe, following up with the Department of Public Health, that Governor Baker's proposal was, although it's not supported by direct research, it was supported by the by the best judgment of the State Department of Public Health on what might constitute an exposure pathway into our grocery stores during the time of this crisis. And so I support the idea of suspending for the time being the reusable bag ordinance. And further, I think it would, and I would ask the sponsor to consider a friendly amendment, that we reexamine this issue on a 60-day basis. So we're roughly, April 1st, we could look at it again on June 1st or sometime soon thereafter to see if we're past the point where a bag ban protects theoretically public health. And I would ask the sponsor to consider an amendment of that type.
Before we continue, I'm going to go to Counsel Vogel, who hasn't spoken yet, and then back to Counsel Kahn. But the motion by Counselor Kahn and seconded by Counselor Vogel is to receive and file, just so everyone knows. Counselor Vogel.
Thank you. So I'm reading right now. I'm sitting in front of a computer and I'm reading, and the state has banned it. I mean, it's kind of a moot point, and I think that it trickles right on down to us. So if the state has banned it, why are we even discussing this any further? I think receive and file is most appropriate.
Counselor Kahn.
Yes, that's what I was going to say. The actual ban is that all reusable bags are banned across the state, and any jurisdiction that has a local ban on plastic bags at grocery stores or pharmacies, that's being lifted. So yeah, it is a moot point, and I would encourage we just receive and file.
Any further comments by people raising hands? The motion is to receive and file. Does anyone object to receiving and filing either verbally or by raising your hand electronically? I'm not seeing any objection. Therefore, it is received and filed. Mr. Clerk.
Okay, Mr. President?
Next item. Yeah, item 177, Order 177.
Order 177 is an order authorizing the parking clerk to extend employee parking permits, the gist of which is that it would authorize the clerk to extend the expiration date of said permits issued on or after March 10th by the number of days calculated between the state of emergency declared by the governor and its ultimate rescission date, whatever that may be. Permit holders will be notified by email about this. It is jointly sponsored. Counselors Zied, McCauley, and Argheman.
Counsel Zied.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this and as well as declare an emergency to do so in one night. For obvious reasons.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Second.
That was by, I know Counselor Kahn, I heard your voice.
I was there too, either way.
Okay.
How about a discussion?
May I speak to it, Mr. President?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so the sponsors had been communicating with the clerk, and I know some counselors have received direct questions or comments on how we might handle parking, particularly permits, you know, in light of the current situation. And this is a fairly straightforward order. It basically means that if you bought your permit on or after March 10th, and let's say it was good for 30 days, and therefore it was going to expire on April 10th, that, you know, the time you have on it will be extended by the exact number of days that the state of emergency lasts. As we all know, we don't know exactly how long that's going to be just yet, so it's written in a way that is fairly bright line, but allows the clerk to wait until the order, the emergency status is lifted by the governor, calculate the number of days and add that to permits. This seems to be a fair way. And the reason I'd like you to consider doing it tonight rather than on it is just so that we can, whatever we can do to offer some of our downtown businesses, frankly, some, anything we could offer, I think, would be a welcome. And we're not offering any money back or doing anything in that regard, just basically offering that extension because the things are basically shut down at the moment. So that's my pitch to you. And, you know, I'm sure the other sponsors may like to add their own, but that's the general idea. Thank you, Mr. President.
So we'll take both the, we're going to have separate votes, but anyone want to speak on the emergency and then the underlying order? Not seeing any more hands. So, Mr. Clerk, if you could articulate the emergency preamble, and then we can vote on that?
Yeah, this is a motion to waive the rules and to declare an emergency under our charter provision, which, as we know, requires a two-thirds vote, due to the fact that we are literally under an emergent. This may be the only genuine emergency we've ever been under. And it would allow me to email the great number of employee permit holders and give them some satisfaction that they are, their permit's been extended until the emergency is over. So having said that, I think there's a first and a second. Mr. President, shall I go for a roll call vote?
Please do. Call the roll.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Zied.
Yes.
Counsel Devlin.
Yes.
Counsel Kahn.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tontar.
Yes.
Counsel President.
Yes. Now, if we could call the roll on the underlying order?
This is a motion to approve Order 177. Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Zied.
Yes.
Counsel Devlin.
Yes.
Counsel Kahn.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tontar.
Yes.
Counsel President, argument.
Yes.
Thank you.
Onto ordinances. Doesn't look like we have any.
No, we do not.
All right. So let's do committee items, starting with the Committee on Budget and Finance.
Motion to approve Transfer 69, which is a transfer of $13,000 to EMR Maintenance and EMR Utilities, Emergency Management.
Second.
Counsel Kahn, seconded. Discussion on this matter, to remove it, just to remove it. Any objections to removal?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you already removed it. Yes, yes, I forgot you used that procedure. More discussion. Counselor, Chair Tontar, go right ahead.
So the Committee on Budget and Finance voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval after some discussion. The Emergency Operations Center was located at the Low Street facility. The facility, as indicated, the transfer was closed due to untenable conditions. And we received this this transfer on March 9th, and the intent was for us to address it on March 30th, which is what we are doing. However, in the interim, work was begun relocating to DPS facility. $10,500 of the $13,000 was for that relocation, and a lot of it was for putting up an antenna tower. The other $2,500 was for utility expenditures at the old building, from what I understand, from what I understand. If the president's forbearance, I would ask if the fire chief could be recognized and provide a reason for why that work was begun before what it was, before we voted on.
Okay, I have Counselor Zied stand up. Counselor Zied, do you want to speak before we call on the fire chief?
No, I'll yield. Thank you.
Okay. Chief Leclair, are you on?
Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
Good evening, Mr. President and City Councilors. As the council knows, the old EOC building has been in use for years. There's an old Armory, National Guard Armory building that has mold issues. Due to the fact that we use the building infrequently for our bi-annual exercises with Seabrook Station, we were able to air it out when we were using it because of the mold issues. We didn't complain much because we don't. We were able to get through it. This year is a year for graded exercises and drills. I got complaints about people getting sick inside that building and feeling nauseous because of the mold, something the Parks Department doesn't really have to put up with now because they're utilizing mainly just the garage. I made the decision to not use the building anymore. The water and sewer building gave us the opportunity to to go through the one expense of moving the radios and phone systems over to the new building so we could do our graded exercises and our drills and any storm uses that we had for the building in a new facility that was clean. So that was the only expense. Again, we won't have a separate building for EOC, but we had to move those radios that involved installing a new antenna mast because the old one was rotted from the old building. And that's how this expense came up. Remember, the emergency management budget is a bare bones budget throughout most of the year. This is really the only upgrade we've ever made to emergency management. the only upgrade we've ever made to emergency management. I hope that answers the questions. Thank you.
Counselor Zede.
Yeah, I just wanted to make very brief comment. I am on Budget and Finance and did vote to support, but I want to express my sort of discontent with some aspects of this. And none of them really have to do with the fire chief or anything like that. But these are my frustrations. You know, number one is, I recall that, you know, this building was, you know, had great bones, I think were some of the terms that were used last year, when money was being appropriated for a feasibility study related to youth services, and was potentially ready for an addition. That was what was communicated to the council. We've been told that the building commissioner went through the building. So evidently, in a matter of just months, it's sort of gone from being a viable alternative or option to basically being uninhabitable. So that's one frustration. Second one is, my understanding is that the Parks Department is using the building. It's not clear to me to what extent exactly, and I wouldn't put the fire chief on the spot to try and answer that, that's not his bailiwick, but sounds like the building currently is being used. I'm not sure what to make of that. Next one is, I was a little bit surprised to hear that there is evidently space at DPS. That was a great discussion over the past several years, as we talked about potential locations for parks in an effort to get them out of Atkinson, which has caused the neighbors there and other park users quite a bit of consternation. So I was a little bit surprised when evidently there was just empty and available space at DPS Water Sewer for that purpose. And then, of course, you know, with respect to the chief, and I understand these expenses come up, but, you know, I'm always going to be frustrated when expenses come up, and they, you know, they sort of make our discussions moot. We do exist for a reason, and I think we're pretty good about meeting when we need to, and I think we've shown our commitment throughout this process. So those are sort of my comments, my frustrations. At the end of the day, though, especially obviously in light of where we are today, you can't go without an EOC, both for Seabrook Station purposes, but also, as we can see, for other emergencies that may arise. So that's why it was a yes vote, but it's not the favorite vote I've taken so far this year. So that, those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, before I go back to the chief, who has his hand up, Counselor McCauley.
Yeah, I have a, I share the counsel from Wood One's frustration on a number of different items, but my question is really to, I have a question for the chief, which is, the antenna was erected and built. I'm assuming now that we have a more permanent place for the EOC, and that this antenna will be a more permanent structure going forward, so we won't have to re-erect something else in the future. That's really the question. Thanks.
So back to Chief Leclerc.
Good evening, Counselor McCauley, thanks for the question. As you know, as we look to the future and build fire stations, the EOC will be addressed in the future. But due to the condition of the building, and just to address Counselor Zede's question as well, Parks Department is using the garage section of the building, and they must spend most of the time outside, not in the office space, so I don't think it affects them as much. The mold is in the building. I don't know if it affects the structure of the building, but it does certainly affect the air quality and the unpleasure, unpleasurableness of being in the building for the extended period of time. The radios were installed into the water and sewer training room, again, utilizing a multipurpose room in the space that was already built in the building. And the radios don't take up a very large amount of space, and the antenna mast is a permanent installation.
Other questions for the chief or comments from counselors? No, I have a comment. It hasn't been noted. I'm not allowed to deliberate, so I'm just going to note for the record that under our charter, Section 6.7, there can be no, not only no expenditure of funds beyond what's been appropriated, but no city official shall knowingly and intentionally involve the city in any contract, in any contracts, for the future payment of money in excess of an appropriation. And the charter goes farther, and I think it's the only place where the phrase is used, it says that this section has to be strictly enforced. So I want to note that for the record. That really needs to be emphasized. Any further comments? I'm not seeing any. Okay, let's take a, let's take a roll call on, Counselor Tontar.
Yeah, I just want to reference Section 6.7, the charter again. And actually, I suspect Section 31 and Chapter 44 of the General Laws is of greater import. I think it's clearer there. In the charter, it specifies a constraint on that phrase. It says that no official of the city in New York City shall knowingly and intentionally expend in any fiscal year any sums. It doesn't say at any moment during the fiscal year, but it says in any fiscal year. So that would be interpreted, that could be interpreted in a number of different ways. I just want to note that. Maybe that's something that we need to clear up. Section 31 of Chapter 44, however, is clear on it, that state law. I'm done.
I apologize, but I would like to point out that every moment of every fiscal year is in a fiscal year. I don't, I don't understand that point. But if you're, if you're saying that you don't think it was a violation, I, do you want to go on record saying that, Counselor?
I'm saying that it's a violation of mass general law.
Okay. Counselor Devlin.
I, that's a tenuous reading of that. That doesn't make any sense. It's a violation of both. That's, respectfully, I don't think that's, that's the fair reading of our charter either.
Further comments? Okay, so why don't we take a roll on this transfer? That would be easier, I think, than our normal procedure. Can you call the roll, Clerk?
Yes, I can. It's a motion approved, Transfer 69. Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Zede.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counsel President, argument.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Further items, Chair, items, Chair Tontar.
Motion to approve Transfer 71. It's an $80,000 transfer from receipt for appropriation fuel to DPS Highway Fuel and Oil. This is pretty standard. We do it every year. And it's absolutely needed right now, and to continue to get fuel for the city's sleep.
Second.
Discussion on this?
Yes, I have a question. Mrs. Barry.
Counselor Connell.
A question to the chair. I did speak with Tony Fornari about the need to replenish his fuel supply, and they can't put trucks on the street and, for water and sewer or street maintenance, without the fuel to drive them. I understand that need. My question, though, is how does this transfer at this particular time of the year compare to past years, given the fact that we've had very little snow and very few plows on the streets?
Perhaps Ethan Manning would wish to speak on this? Director Manning?
Okay, I'm here now?
Yes, you're on.
Okay, great. Yes, the snow and ice spending is slightly down compared to previous years. But in terms of fuel, we really haven't seen a huge savings for that particular reason. The vehicles have had, you know, a lot of events where they've had to go out and treat the roads, even if it wasn't a full-fledged plowing. But yes, I would expect to see some type of savings in the fuel account, and then especially because of the decreased oil prices between now and year end.
Mr. President, follow?
Yes, please.
Ethan, if I may, the question was, how does it compare to past years? Is that available to us right now?
Certainly. So in terms of the amount that we're transferring, it's identical to the amount that was transferred last year, the $80,000. Year to date, we've spent $137,000 in fuel in total. Last year, at year end, we had spent approximately $180,000. So I think if you annualize that, we are trending below the previous fiscal year.
All right. Thank you. I'll follow up with you sometime tomorrow then. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Counselor.
Other counselors on this transfer? I have a question. Because, you know, we're on transfers, I'm a bit taken aback by the chair's comment about the charter. So Ethan, I just want to understand, is it your position that it is possible, the administration, to make appropriations or enter contracts without, I'm sorry, spend money or enter contracts that will spend money without an appropriation?
That is not necessarily my interpretation of the guidance from the DLS. I think it talks about if you can prove that it's specifically due to the public health emergency, then I think you are allowed to enter into a contract, so long as you get approval from the Bureau of Accounts prior to paying the bill. Realistically speaking, you'd want to get that approval before you entered into the contract, however, because if they don't approve it after the fact, then you're, you're stuck. So I think practically speaking, we would not enter into any contracts without getting that approval either from the Bureau of Accounts or coming back to the council and requesting appropriation.
And so, again, I just want to clarify on the last item, neither happened on that last expenditure, right?
Correct. So in this particular instance, we were waiting for the city council appropriation to approve the payment of the bills, even though the work had already occurred, because going to the DLS would have been pointless, because obviously, the city council appropriation serves the same purpose.
Okay. Back to Counselor Tontar.
Sure, I want to make clear, Massachusetts general law is very clear on this, that the expenditure can take place. What I was pointing out is, I think, our charter is unclear, and I think should be clarified. Just question of language, and so we decided, mass law is very clear, that the administration cannot spend until, unless appropriated.
Okay. Further comments? Not seeing any. No one's raising his hand. Okay, let's do a roll call on this transfer as well, 71.
It's a motion approved, Transfer 71. Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Zede.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
All right, yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Augerman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Anything further from Budget and Finance?
Mr. President.
Okay, on to Committee on Education. Anything tonight?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, nothing for tonight, but I do plan on having our next, we meet monthly typically, and I'm going to check in with the superintendent, and hopefully be able to use Zoom, but I would like to continue with our schedule and have a meeting next Monday. So I will let folks know if that's going to happen, and just working out some details. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee on General Government, that's me. We have one item, Ordinance 52. Counselor Shan is a cosponsor. Counselor Shan, might you make a motion?
Motion to receive and file.
Well, actually, we got to take it out first.
Motion to remove Order, Ordinance 052 from the General Committee.
Second.
Second.
Any opposed to that? Any comment? No, it's out. Motion?
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Second.
Could you explain?
Sure. We were asked to put this in at the request of, I believe, a direct report for a specific person on the planning board, and that request is no longer necessary. So we decided it's appropriate just to receive and file this.
Any other comments, members of the General Government Committee, anyone? No, okay. Any objections to receiving and filing? Raise your hand, make a noise. No. It is received and filed. That's it for General Government. Licenses and permits?
I'll leave a report.
Nothing to report. Neighborhood and City Service?
Nothing to report.
Planning and Development?
Motion to approve Appointment 142, Matt Piesniak to Waterfront Trust.
Second.
Chair Shan, any comments?
We had a very good meeting, it seems eons ago, with Mr. Piesniak regarding his interest in Waterfront Trust, and how he sees us going forward with our waterfront park. The committee voted to approve him three to zero to appoint him to the Waterfront Trust.
Any other comments? Sitting now, let's call the roll.
Roll call for Appointment 142. Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Zede.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Augerman.
Yes.
Levin.
Anything for?
Unanimous.
Okay. Anything further in planning and development?
Nothing tonight.
Public safety.
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Anything on the horizon?
For public safety?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, actually, I was going to bring it up, the good of the order. A number of these, there's a number of applications, as we can see here, a number, several of these would like to withdraw or reschedule, and I suggested to them that they want to update their application thereof. But there's a couple of them, Application 4, for example, Application 7, where they're actually looking for direction from us as to when we think we might be able to, you know, be acceptable to, for us to move forward with these things. You know, the pat, the pat answer is, is not until the state of emergency is lifted, and we have no idea when that, we have no direction as to when that's really going to happen. But those are the types of things that are, that are pending, that may have a turnaround or change from the discount list right now.
Thank you. Public Utilities.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Connell.
I was going to wait to the good of the order, but I think it's appropriate at this time. A thought that I had, because we have approved other applications for gatherings of one sort or another, and I'm wondering if this is the time to discuss the existing license approvals that we've given to events that, given, you know, the current circumstances, we, we really don't want to take place.
Counselor McCauley, do we have any events that are, for example, scheduled in April?
No, we don't. The first one we have coming up is in June. There's a couple of in June, but one, one of the two has already asked that we...
There's a couple of in June, but one, one of the two has already asked that we try to reschedule. He's trying to plan to reschedule sometime in August. So I'm well aware of the counsel at large comment. It's something that I sent out a feeler to the previous approvals, contact, point of contact, and I will update the council as I get responses back in.
Good. Counselor Connell, did you have any other events in mind?
You know, I don't recall specifically, and I'd have to go back and look at my records. Maybe the clerk can refresh our memory if there are any others that are, have already been permitted that we might want to reconsider, and I don't, off the top of my head, no. I thank the chairman for his, you know, his proactive stance and his work on these with the applicants.
If I may, I'd like to proceed to Public Utilities.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Rules Committee.
Nothing this evening.
Okay. Good of the order.
I have a question, a directional question as much as anything else. You know, we do have some pending business here. I do, and public safety, some of these things are kind of urgent. I know we've been overall generally hesitant about having remote online subcommittee meetings, but is there a general feeling that now that we're in this for the longer haul, that we should resume our regular type of committee meetings so that we can move some of the business forward?
Well, I, I, I'll open that up to the floor in a second, but I just would direct you to start with the policy that we adopted, so through Rule 7E. I don't know whose hand was up first. I'll go with Counselor Shan first.
Thank you. So I was planning on doing some of the planning and development committee appointments, meetings. We've got three, as I can tell so far, and I think we could probably do those with Zoom meeting. I wasn't planning on doing any of the hardcore business stuff, but I think getting folks appointed to some of these commissions is appropriate.
Counselor Zied.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just answer the question as directly as possible. I'm not ready to, to support peeling back the portion of the policy on the sort of philosophical agreement we had on not pushing forward on heavy-duty stuff. For me, you know, I'd be ready to revisit that at the end of April, early May, depending on, you know, obviously subject to whatever happens, but that's, you know, there's not a lot of new business coming in, so I realize that, you know, committees are stacked right now with some stuff, but I'm, you know, for example, Public Utilities has one appointment, but the person is serving in a holdover status anyways, so I don't see any reason to push on it, but that's not as pressing as some of the other stuff, but that's my answer, is not yet for me.
Counselor Devlin.
Yeah, I'm just going to reiterate what I said in the first electronic meeting we had. I think we have to be very, very careful. This is not a meeting that's easy for the public to participate in. We're asking them, instead of just showing up and signing up on a board, that we're asking them to email ahead of time, to have public comment, and we should make as few impactful decisions as possible while we're in this state of emergency, because this is, we're not, we're insulated from the public, and I don't, I feel very, very uncomfortable making decisions. As far as what's coming out of public safety for events, no one's allowed to have those events anyway, so anybody who's planning an event is planning something that might not happen, so, you know, I know it's hard for them, but, but my impulse, very, very strong impulse, I was actually, you know, really reluctant on our first meeting, but this is not, I know we think this is all great, but I'm sitting at my desk right now. I don't have somebody staring at me, you know, who just stood up and said, hey, you're going to answer for me the next election. It's just, it's, it's not the same format, that, and the same sort of public interaction that we get from, from doing these meetings in person.
Counselor Wallace.
I would say for public safety, I believe, I can tell you right now, there's two items or four that need attention sooner rather than later, and I would like to see some of those move ahead to the benefit of the residents. I realize the races and those sorts of things are not happening, but public safety and of course budget and finance, those are, I think, very important committees to keep going.
Counselor Vogel.
Thank you. I just wanted to add the two bits, if you're looking sort of for a straw vote. I agree with the counsel at large, Devlin, and counsel from Ward 1, and also from Counselor Wallace. We really need to just be diligent in what we're doing, be appropriate, not particularly press it. I think common sense speaks for itself, and so if you're looking for a straw vote, I like the fact that we're a little bit pulled back, that we're doing nothing of major consequences, and I think that that's where we just need to stay. I think the public, from what I hear, and I do still hear, everybody's fine with just that. They're all so caught up in what they're doing. And we talked to Andy Port this afternoon about what's going on on the planning side of things, and he seemed to feel the same way. So we can just, we can stay fairly dialed back.
Counselor Tontar.
Yeah, I generally agree with what's been said, and by budget and finance, we'll do what we have to do. We'll meet when we have to meet, because we have to meet, but we won't do things that we don't have to do. That's easy. I'm currently operating on my own license that I paid for, is, but is there a plan for council chairs who have to have meetings to be provided with a license?
Yeah, Clerk Jones, we actually, yeah, we talked about that. Clerk Jones, could you answer that for Counselor Tontar?
Yes, Counselor Tontar, actually, at your urging, I brought that up at the ad hoc remote committee meeting today, which was at 2:30, and I think there was unanimous consent that going forward, I would establish.
I'd pay for it. Yes, that's a good idea.
Yes, yeah, that I would pay for two or three or four, whatever is needed for the chairs, the active chairs, to have Zoom accounts. In other words, there's no need for a counselor to go out and spend their own money. It's $55 a month, and it would continue from month to month. We don't know how long now, but I would expect I would start doing that tomorrow. I know that you would need one, Counselor Tontar, and it sounds like two or three others would be needed. So contact me and tell me when you would need it by, and then we would, I would purchase those through our account at the appropriate time, which means later, not sooner, so that we don't start spending money until we need to. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Other councilors for good of the order. Counselor Devlin.
Yeah, just, there was an update today on the Governor's House bill, or the legislation that went through the House. Part of it contains a provision to allow on-premise licensed establishments to sell, to go, or alcohol, or wine and malt for off-premise consumption. That was cleared by Ways and Means Friday, and then approved by unanimous, by a vote of the House, and now it's in the Senate. The Senate is, was in session today and is in session on Thursday, and there's, they're anticipated that they will pass it with few changes. A couple of interesting points to it is wine can go up to a bottle, one bottle of wine, but you can sell up to 192 ounces of malt in a sealed container. It doesn't have to be the original sealed container, so they can fill up growlers, and another thing that's called a crowler, it's a, it's a can, you know, that gets filled up and then sealed. So, you know, it's actually, that, that last part about the malt beverages, a lot of restaurants have a lot of their inventory expense in beer taps, and that would be, and they can't use those kegs after they've tapped them in three weeks or four weeks, they're not going to be able to use those kegs when the closure, if the closures are lifted. So that's a, that's a very convenient way for them and a very helpful way, and the people I've spoken in the restaurant industry nationally and locally have been very receptive to that change. Hopefully, it gets changed, and that'll maybe give some, really, some of our downtown restaurants as well.
Thank you. Other councilors? All right, the only thing that I've caught in, you know, these last two meetings, as you notice, we don't do the pledge of allegiance. It's not a lack of patriotism, but we don't have a flag, so I, just so everyone knows why that happened, Title 4, Section 4 of Title 4 of the U.S. Code actually sets the rules, and you can't say allegiance when there's no flag. All right, well, with that, I take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or objection? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.